The time is 7:31. I call the December 17th meeting of Yardley Borough Council to order. Please stand. Everyone is prepared for the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, just a reminder to turn your mics on, everyone, if they're not. Roll call, please, Manager Johnson or Patty, either way. Ms. Thompson?
Present.
Ms. Siegel-Morris. Mr. Applebaum?
Here.
Ms. Scherer?
Present.
Mr. Carlson?
Present.
Mr. Finer?
Present.
Mr. Stumpf?
Present.
Six members present, we have a quorum. Community announcements, this is the portion where members of council, the mayor, the public can tell us about upcoming events happening in and around the borough. Any community announcements?
Uh, no, Michelle? Okay, hello?
Yes.
Um, couple. First, I noticed that the old library is sponsoring their holiday open houses. There is another one on December 21st between 1:00 and 4:00 p.m. I've been there before, they have trains, trolleys, circling on a, on a track, a tree, very festive, I believe they give out free cookies and cider, not to be missed, that's one. And on, I almost said September, geez, December 29th, that's a Sunday, beginning at 3:00 p.m., is the Yardley Hanukkah Village, free of charge, open to all, and it's sponsored by the Shabat Lubavitch of Yardley. And it begins at 3:00 with Hanukkah activities, giveaways and treats. There'll be participating vendors and activities along Main Street, and then a 4:15 Grand menorah lighting at Budenwood Park, and there'll be a, a giant fire truck there dropping gelt, and gelt, of course, is a, like a Yiddish word for money. So, come on out and see if you can get some gelt, chocolate, that is.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other community announcements from the table first? Any from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to public comment. This is the portion where members of the public can approach council, state their name and address, and address us on matters not on the agenda. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes per matter. Any public comment this evening? Hearing none, I will close public comment. Moving on to consideration of the consent agenda dated December 17th, 2024, which is quite lengthy. Item A, approval of minutes dated December 3rd. Item B, consideration of FEMA funded 93 North Delaware Ave elevation payment certificate number seven, same property, change order number five. Same property, change order number six, owner. Same property, payment certificate number eight, final. Same property, payment certificate number five, final, owner. Agreement for 93 North Delaware Ave. Consideration of FEMA funded 25 North Delaware Avenue elevation payment certificate number seven, final. Consideration of FEMA funded 112 through 114 Morgan Ave elevation payment certificate number one. Consideration of FEMA funded 45 South Delaware Ave elevation, change order number seven, same property, payment certificate number seven, final. Same property, payment certificate number three, final, alternates, owner. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Um, yes, I'd like to request that we take items B through L and consider them in groups based on the property under the Public Works section of the meeting. So that would mean B through G considered together, H considered by itself, I considered by itself, and J through L considered by themselves, which would leave just the minutes on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any other requests on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes dated December 3rd, 2024.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by councilperson Scherer, seconded by councilperson Finer. Discussion from council. Any discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. You have before you the finance report dated December 17th, 2024. Are there any issues or questions? Otherwise, it will be accepted by consensus. All right, is there any report from public safety this evening, from the Public Safety Committee?
A report.
Okay. Is there any report from Public Works this evening beyond the consent agenda items? All right, let's take those, so, oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead, let's.
Items B through G, these relate to 93 North Delaware Avenue. Do I hear a motion to approve items B through G? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by councilperson Scherer, seconded by councilperson Stumpf. Discussion from council.
Yes, so the reason why I wanted to do this was just to give us an opportunity. Some of these, there may not be any discussion on, but this is, I think, 11 items, I lost count, and it represents about $100,000 in payments that we're releasing, and so for the sake of transparency and to give people an opportunity to comment if they have something to comment, I think that anything this large scale should, should not just be lumped into minutes, permits, little things like that. So yeah, so on, on that note, on 93, with all the work we've done behind the scenes, it looks like everything is good to move forward with that. I believe the McGraffs are here in attendance. Do you have any comments that you wish to add, or it's okay if you don't?
Reagging.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else on council? Carolyn, I'll go back to you. Sorry, I'm not running the meeting, I'm not trying to take your job, I don't want it.
It's okay, it's the last meeting of the year, we're all feeling ready to be done. I don't have any comments on this one, I'm happy to see that we are finally hopefully getting the homeowners back in their house. Excellent. Small victories that are, feel like very big victories, okay. I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve FEMA funded 25 North Delaware Ave elevation payment certificate number seven, final? That's item H on your consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by councilperson Stumpf, seconded by councilperson Carlson. Discussion on this one?
One question I have, Manager Johnson, so with this being the final payment certificate, does this totally close out this project?
Yes.
Okay. And we haven't heard anything from the homeowner, and the contractor is the owner of the property, so I assume that everything has-
All good.
Been good here?
Yep.
Okay. I have no further questions on that.
Any other questions or comments from council first?
Just a process question, actually for you, Paula. In the event, you know, because council doesn't, people have varying levels of understanding of these projects, sometimes they get complicated and sometimes they're fluid. If we vote to approve something, but new information comes in or something happens that makes the borough question whether that payment should be released, could the borough withhold that payment until they feel confident, until you feel confident? So we're essentially saying, looks good to us, but you've got another set of eyes, essentially. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Item I, consideration of FEMA funded 112, 114 Morgan Ave elevation payment certificate number one. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by councilperson Stumpf, seconded by councilperson Finer. Discussion from council on this one.
So on this one, I did just a little bit of due diligence this afternoon, because there, there have been so many things that have come up over the past year about the elevation process in general, and with the creation of the ERAB Elevation Resident Advisory Board, that's going to make some recommendations on the process. We're kind of in an in-between period over the year 2025, where that is not actually put into play, and so one of the things as a member of Public Works and Community Outreach kind of have a very unique dual role in that it overlaps both of these things, so I've taken the initiative to just, just look into it and see how things are going, rather than waiting for the problems to, to come up to us. And so happy to report here that there are no issues, everything is moving forward, communication has been good. This is also one where the homeowner is also the general contractor, and so I think that kind of puts you in a position where, you know, you're not gonna, not gonna do anything to hurt yourself, and if you do, it's on you, and you can sort it out with yourself, so.
Convenient.
I, this is probably the largest of the payments, I believe it's $78,000, and based on what I learned today, I have full confidence in approving this.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? From the public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Finally, item J through L, consideration of FEMA funded 45 South Delaware Ave, we have change order number seven, payment certificate number seven, final, and payment certificate number three, final, alternates, owner. Is there a motion to approve these?
Some left.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by councilperson Finer, seconded by councilperson Applebaum. Discussion from council.
The only question that I had on this, and it's probably more of a packed question, but Paula may be able to answer it here with the, the things that you sent over, the only question I had was on the, the CMU. Do you know what that acronym stands for? I Googled it and it came up with Carnegie Mellon-
Oh, university.
It's the cinder block, okay. That was my guess, but I wasn't quite sure. I assumed we did not put $19,500 worth of Carnegie Mellon University into Ms. Klein's phone.
Would be a bargain.
That we, that we know of, so, anyway, that answers my question. Thank you, Mr. McGrath.
Concrete Masonry Unit. I was like, how did they get from, from, from cinder block to CMU, so thank you Google.
Other words, a block.
I even Googled CMU in contracting, and I still got, then it expanded a little bit from Carnegie Mellon to Central Michigan University, come take our contracting program. So, anyway, just thought I'd do a little clarification on that.
Anything else from council on this one?
Yeah. I, I just realized, is this your house, Ms. Klein? So, congratulations, I guess, that you're closing out. Are you satisfied with the results?
Mr. Applebaum, if we, we're gonna have back and forth, if you could just come forward and state your name and address.
Sorry, I apologize.
Patty Klein, 45, South Delaware. So, councilperson Applebaum was asking about your satisfaction with-
Well, I'm asking about satisfaction because I have a, you know, a history of, of, you know, evaluating and reviewing some of the issues that Ms. Klein was having, and I just want to make sure that you're okay with how things are moving forward. I unfortunately have not had the opportunity to speak to you for a short bit, and, you know, it'll be all good. I just wanted to make sure that you're satisfied with everything.
Thank you for that. I didn't know what these items on the agenda were, so can I hear what they are? I mean, obviously, one of them is the CMU that I paid for, but the other two are?
Oh, so the, the other one is the roof and a few other odds and ends. It's restoration work that's been done. That's what the initial line item was, was restorations, but then when I dug into that further, I think it was roof, soffit.
Okay.
There were a few other items I can pull up.
Okay.
Yeah, the $19,000 for the CMU.
Right, that's mine, so that's the owner one, that's L?
That is, three, final, yeah.
Okay.
Three, final, yes.
Okay.
Seven is... Project restoration items, including roof repair, landscaping restoration, utility room door, microwave replacement and soffit repair, the change order reflects a net adjustment to the contract.
Okay.
That item is almost $6,000.
Okay.
And...
And I believe the CMU is just 10% of it, because other elements of it were paid when the payments are released, because it's, it's not that items are paid individually, the whole project is just split up into multiple payments.
No, that, okay, that's my part of the CMU.
Right, I think though, that payment, though, is like $2,000, what's on the agenda tonight, whereas the whole payment is much larger.
Okay, I get it.
And so that, those items I just listed were those, the change order for those items and then the payment for those items, so that's everything.
And then, and then answer, to answer your question, David, everyone knows that it's been a bit of a, a rough road in there. Is the one item that's still outstanding, and that's the, the headroom coming into the home, and it's, it's not to code, and it's a problem that has been hanging around and hoping that it can be addressed.
Yes, that is on our radar.
Okay.
That's it.
I just wanted to thank you for your perseverance and, you know, to you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and I appreciate everybody taking the time that you've taken on this project. It's, it's been a bear, so I appreciate that. So these finals are not completely closed out, is what, is the question that I have, right? These are closed out for these payments, but not for the project.
We're, we're closing out with FEMA, because we have to, by the 23rd of December.
Okay.
That does not mean that if something was done incorrectly, we do not have recourse to fix it.
Okay. All right, those are my questions, and-
Another question I have, Carolyn, on that note, because you had asked me this, this conver, this question in previous conversations that we had. Once she's closed out with FEMA, then even though you've been living in the home, it's turned back over to her, where any additional work she wants to do, she's in the clear to, to do that, or pull permits for certain things, right?
I'm not the person to answer that question, that's my understanding, but I, I feel comfortable-
Yeah, I didn't either.
Yeah.
Who, who would that question be for?
Definitely talk to us about permits and stuff, if you're doing something that could potentially need a permit, so just give us a call, you know where we're at.
Okay.
And I'm not saying there is anything going on.
I would think that that's the case, because if it's not under FEMA's direction, then it's back to, you know, the homeowner and the process that happens to a homeowner. You know, if the contract is closed, I think it's like it does exist. I, I would think, I mean, I'm not-
That's how I understand it, yeah.
I would be careful, because I think I read somewhere that they have, they get a period after you submit the final.
So maybe there's a period.
There's a period where you can't touch it, where they can-
So, read the contract, I guess.
I read one of those contracts and there was a period after.
It might be a question for Susan to have a final answer.
Yeah, that would be a good FAQ question, you know, in our, you know, the outcome, if there's like an FAQ, that's one of the things that, you know, manual.
As somebody who went through a borough, you know, a borough elevation project, you are under our care, even after the grant ends, your house is in the borough, and if you have any questions at all, come to us, and we will get you the answer to those questions.
Sounds, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add, since we're in discussion here, I just want to thank both groups of homeowners. No, you can, it's okay, it's-
They're, it's on the radar, they're, they're under discussion, it's, right, that's what you said?
We, yes, we, you, you said on record, they're not to code, we are looking into it. If they, if they are not to code and they were not done correctly, they need to be fixed, yes.
I mean, like any project that's done, if something is discovered after it's completed and there's a problem, you know, we, we need, we need to go back.
I take it that it hasn't-
Figure out who's responsible.
No, I, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm on council.
You wouldn't know, but I'm just-
I am not going to pass judgment on whether something is or is not to code. I think, as you know, there's a lot of cooks in the kitchen on an elevation project, so the question becomes, where did the air occur? Was it an air with the permit? Was it an air with the, with the, with the contractor doing work that wasn't on the permit? Was it with something else? So, we kind of have to follow that paper trail, and we are in the midst of doing that. And when we can all confirm and agree that, yes, it was done wrong, this is why it was done wrong, this is who is at fault, we can provide an action plan with how we are going to fix it. I can't do that right now.
I understand. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I was just in the process of thanking both groups of homeowners here, just because you're here for these approvals, and I think it's a good precedent. I, I've mentioned this before, but I think for our process moving forward, I just want it noted that we urge homeowners to be here when we approve the payments for their home. I think it's important for us to be able to say, is everything okay? Is there a problem? Is there, you know, because it's just kind of like a check and balance on the whole process. And I would love to get a, a sign off from the homeowners, simple form saying, I agree, this should be released beforehand in our packet, so that we feel more confident that the homeowner is on board. It's not that it's required, but it would tell us, okay, there's, there's something we need to look deeper into here. And so I think that would be a good, good for everyone kind of process. Just making note.
Yep. Read.
Now it's in the minutes. Thanks.
We like when people come to our meetings.
Absolutely. All right.
That doesn't mean you have to stay for the whole meeting, you can jet out and-
Don't feel bad.
Go somewhere to get a drink whenever you're-
We won't hold it against you. But if you're going and getting some coffees, you know, that's good.
All right, all right, bringing it back. Is there anything else on 45? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? Motion carries, 5-1-0. Moving on to other business, which is our big business for the evening, the 2025 budget, tax levy ordinance and resolution on trash fees. Councilperson Carlson, turn it over to you, or Manager Johnson?
Sure. I want to make a motion to adopt our 2025 budget. We, we went through the period of allowing the public to look at it, and then recently up until the bills that you, we all signed off on today, looked at the performance from September to December 17th, and were favorable, we're probably gonna end the year favorable to what we thought we would, which is good, so we'll have a little head start into next year. The primaries of improvement were real estate transfer tax, we had a strong, very strong December finish. We ended up within a couple hundred dollars of last year's number, so we ended up being almost $17,000 higher than what I guessed in September. So that was favorable, and interest continued to be favorable. We had predicted that the, our money would, interest rates would go down in 2024 at a faster clip than they did. They've gone down a little bit, but we thought they'd be down in the 2.5% to 3% number by now, and they're 4.5. So that's good. So we picked up another 10 grand in extra interest. So those are two favorable things. There were a few, a few other things that changed in the last month, you know, some insurance, it was a little more, and some, some puts and takes, but overall, this budget looks just as good, looks even better today than it looked when we passed the original draft.
Excellent, so councilperson Carlson made a motion. My, my thanks for all of your work, and Manager Johnson, Patty's work on this. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by councilperson Carlson, seconded by councilperson Finer. Discussion.
I'll just thank you for the time that you put into this and the diligence that you went through here, and I think you, you pulled off a fair and reasonable budget for us, so appreciate it.
And also, just in recent memory, our projections were terrible, our financial forecasting was terrible. I mean, we were all over the map and picking numbers out of a hat a little bit. And, I mean, there, there was a lot of economic uncertainty that we were playing with too, but the, the fact that our estimates are so close, that I think we're able to vote on this with a lot more confidence than we have in past years. I would request, if, once we have the final adopted, can you share an Excel spreadsheet with all of council, so we have that, that we can save to our computers, and then I think, you know, we post, post, we used to post on the, the website under financials, and I don't know if when you download, is it an XLS? It's a, like a PDF.
PDF, yeah, we should definitely post. XLS, yeah. Be good.
Any other questions from council? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, tax, tax levy.
You can do that one. That's the technicality.
This is our tax levy ordinance, number 494. It's showing a 2 mil increase that will go into our general fund.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion was made by councilperson Carlson, seconded by councilperson Scherer. Discussion from council. From the public?
Do we want to give an explanation of why?
Why what?
Increased costs, cost of living, salaries go up, contractual.
I think we've said this before, but we should always explain that unlike a lot of municipalities, we have no automatic increases because the homes haven't been reassessed since the 70s. So essentially, inflation continues, and we essentially, if we don't raise the millage, we have less money the following year. So I have suggested in the past that we should just do it every year, at least to the level of inflation, and say, hey, this is, this is just, you know, the value of money, without even considering the fact that our expenses, like insurance, is way higher than, goes, goes up, you know, inflation might be three or- Without even considering the fact that our expenses, like insurance, is way higher than, goes, goes up, you know, inflation might be 3% or 4%, insurance might be like lately, 15%, 20% or more, like crazy numbers.
Mine's been 50 in the past five years.
Yeah, and that's not uncommon. So, uh, so that's a different issue, um, and the other thing I think we should.
It's doubled.
Doubled, yeah, okay, in five years, sure. Uh, so I think that we should also just explain the percentage of what 2 mils is over, in terms of somebody's overall municipal tax bill, so that we can kind of equate that with percentage, and people can understand what that number is.
Yeah, so, I mean, we did the whole presentation, so I think the best way would be to go back and watch the presentation, go slide by slide into what it is to the average taxpayer. Um, it's, it's posted on, on Facebook and on, where else do they post, on YouTube? YouTube. Yes, but to, to Ari's point, we've, we've moved away from boroughs, uh, councils past that waited five, six, seven years, 10 years at one point, and then raised taxes in astronomical amount. That was really a, a huge hit to taxpayers, a huge jump. Now, we make incremental increases, we're kind of on like an every other or every third year schedule right now. Um, Mr. Finer is saying maybe it makes sense to do small ones every year, but, uh, to answer councilperson Applebaum's question beyond watching the presentation again, we have no large capital projects in this budget. We're planning to apply for grants to pay for those, but this is just to pay our bills, um, and keep the lights on. Very lean.
I just thought I'd mention, I personally agree with, um, Mr. Finer, um, and I've thought that myself for a pretty long time, is it's small incremental is definitely better than waiting, because the last time it was a long, that was just awful. And I believe if you do it every year, they're very tiny, so you can kind of absorb that better than if you wait two or three years, then it feels worse to, to the taxpayers, so.
Any other comments from council? From the public? Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
And the last item is Resolution 2413, which is just saying what our trash fees are going to be for our residents for next year, and this is, um, purely an increase of our contract as well. So for, um, single family, multifamily, um, units, it's going to be 112 per quarter for 2025.
Rising, rising from what, I forgot myself, because I have auto pay, 105, so $7.50, yeah, 6%.
And it's purely contractual.
Yeah, which is, we know, way lower than a lot of municipalities are paying, so we're, we're happy with that.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion was made by councilperson Finer, seconded by councilperson Scherer. Discussion from council?
Manager Johnson, what year are we on in the contract? It's a three-year contract, right?
It is a three-year contract, we have a two-year option.
Okay.
Which I would highly recommend taking.
Is this, so is this the third year then, or is this the second year? I'm just trying to remember.
Second, second year of this contract.
Any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else for the good of the order, otherwise I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thanks for everyone's hard work this year.
Yeah, happy holidays, happy new year, um, here's to a great and productive 2025. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion was made and seconded, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 8:01, 8:02?